Yeah, I can probably get some of the interchanges.
Is there a second session tonight? Awesome. Thank God.
You got here early, you wouldn't have a problem.
We're waiting on you.
There would be nobody out there when I walked in.
And you're sitting over here.
Yeah, they hadn't got up and started doing it yet.
I'm surprised they uh...
Well, I don't mind them wanting you. They should be interested to know who's.
Yeah, I'll see.
Okay, who's your mom? You ready?
I think it's six o'clock.
I'm ready.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order, please. This is a Canton City Council meeting, April 4th, 2019. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman?
May we bow? Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for all this beautiful weather that you've given us. We ask that you be with each of us and our citizens. Help us to make the right decisions here tonight and continue to move Canton forward and make it the great city that it has been. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, you have your agenda, and I would like to add to that an executive session to discuss real estate and litigation. Other than that, that's all I have. Does anyone have any other changes or to the agenda? If not, I'll...
Motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Uh, Ms. Grant made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay, under guests and visitors tonight, certainly want to welcome everyone here tonight, but have a, have a couple of items. First of all, our city manager would like to make an introduction of a new staff member.
Sure. I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Belinda Hardy. Uh, Belinda is our new downtown development manager, and she may have a few words that she wants to share with you. She's been with us. She started last week, actually started the week before, but was gone last week to the National Main Streets Conference and made it back just in time for the Art and Wine Walk. So she's had a pretty busy start with us, but we're glad to have her. She's joining us with well over a decade of service in downtown development, time in Opelika, Alabama, Covington, and social circles. We're very excited to have her, but I'll let her introduce herself.
Good evening. Um, I thought what I would do, if you didn't mind, is basically give you kind of a little round, around rundown, excuse me, of what's been going on since I've been here. Um, and it's a two pager, it's pretty cool. Um, so, good evening to the mayor and to council, and I'm here to speak on the behalf of the Main Street and to give you a rundown of all the activities that are coming up in the downtown area in the next month. Probably gonna read a lot from this just because I don't wanna mess that up. Alright, so Main Street is celebrating the huge success of the Fourth Annual Art and Wine Walk that took place this past weekend, and we appreciate the countless number of volunteers that gave us their time, which included our mayor and many of our city council members and our city manager. Um, we had close to 600 tickets that were sold. Not every one of those that were visiting with us purchased a ticket, so we estimate over 1,000 people that were in attendance in those two. Our first, First Friday of 2019 is just a few weeks away. The planning is right on schedule. Our first band is May 3rd, which will be the return, which is a Beatles tribute band. We have 16 food vendors that have confirmed, and I expect a few more, so come hungry that night. Uh, the Canton Farmers Market kicks off on Saturday, May 11th, and will continue through October 5th, and as of now, we have 47 vendors that have signed up to be there on opening day. The outdoor movie series in Brown Park sponsored by Northside Hospital, Southern Outdoor Cinema, 104.7 The Fish, and the city of Canton will begin May 11th. Other movie nights will be June 11th and July 6th. Movie snacks will be available for purchase, and admission is free. Okay, so this is the best one. I saved this one for the last thing. Um, we found out last night that Canton Main Street has been nominated for the Independent We Stand America's Main Street Contest. And basically what that is, is I nominated us. Uh, I told them how great we were, and um, and we, they acknowledged that. And so there's some voting that is gonna be going on through April 20th. That's the first round. And um, there's over 80 fellow Main Street communities across the United States that are part of this contest. Um, you may vote once every 24 hours, and like I said, the first round ends on April 20th, and at that time, Steel will announce the top 10 vote-getters. And um, the voting will then start all over again. Should we win, which I forgot to mention that part, 25,000. Um, so should we win the $25,000 prize, we will use the money to provide seed money for new business growth in the downtown area as we move Canton forward. The link to vote on the Downtown Canton is on, excuse me, is on the Downtown Canton Facebook page. Also took advantage of the great number that we have on First Fridays, which is over 5,700 people, and then on the Farmers Market page too. So if you'll just go and look for it, it, um, you'll just click on that link and you'll be able to read about us. There's a really great picture of us, and just vote, and just share it with your friends and let them know. $25,000 is a great prize. And um, if we don't win, we're acknowledged, and that's the great thing. So, y'all got any questions for me?
Any questions? Sounds exciting.
Yeah, I've learned a lot at national conference, and so I'm excited to bring that to the board next week when we meet and um, give them some, a few ideas, and we'll see if we can act on that.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You know, we have a, always have a, a lot of proclamations and so forth, and uh, we have one this month that is among some of the most important ones, I think, for, for people in our community to know, and that has to do with safe digging. I know it sounds kinda crazy, but it's a safe digging month. Who would've thought it, you know? Uh, but I will read this, and then we have some individuals here will present this too. "Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do, do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service disruption, environmental damage, and a threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Cherokee County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damaged underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility, by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of the city of Canton can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim, on behalf of the city of Canton, the month of April 2019 as Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout the city of Canton to always call 9-811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident." And you know, I've alwa, I've always wondered, if I'm planting a shrub or something, do I need to call? If you, if you're digging down, you know, a foot deep or two foot deep? I, I know cable is not very deep, so you need somebody to locate the utilities even for that, even for landscaping and stuff. Okay? Alright. Mr. Kaden?
And thank you, council. Recognizing this day for, for Georgia 811. Uh, I work for George Power and know a lot of you guys around, work, great to work with. Uh, and believe it or not, a lot of, a lot of damages still go on daily. So don't ever be afraid. I can never help any of y'alls. Any of y'all have my number? Just call me, we'll help you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we also received another award that Bill would like to, uh, share with everyone here tonight from the Upper Etowah River Group, so. Ms. Grant?
Yes, it was quite a week of the city getting recognized for good work, but uh, which we don't always get the positive feedback. But on Tuesday night, uh, Ms. McGrew and Mr. Yon and I attended the Upper Etowah River Alliance Annual Meeting at Downtown Kitchen, and we were honored with the 2008 Partnership Award of the Year for our work with them to, uh, help fulfill their mission to protect, conserve, and enhance the natural resources of the Upper Etowah River Basin. So, we were proud for that recognition. We, we thanked them. We got this lovely handmade award, handcrafted award with the snake on there, so. But anyway, uh, we, we were honored to receive that from the Upper Etowah River Alliance, and of course, we thank them for the great work they do on a daily basis to protect one of our greatest assets, the, the Etowah River.
Thank you. That is definitely a unique plaque.
It is.
No doubt. Okay, uh, you have in your agenda package the draft council minutes from March 21st? Oh, you got another one? Okay. I didn't know about that one. Go ahead.
Also, on last Thursday night, at the Historical Society's annual banquet, uh, Ms. McGrew, Mr. Grant, myself, the mayor, Mr. Estes, and I believe Ms. Wilson were in attendance, and I was pleased to accept on behalf of the city, uh, their Preservation Service Award, which reads, "In recognition that the city of Canton has been instrumental in the preservation of historic properties within the city so they remain a part of the landscape of Cherokee County, and that the mayor and council have made it a priority to preserve the historic character of the city, and that the mayor and city council have passed ordinances and supported efforts by residents and other organizations to ensure the city's history is preserved." And so I will present this to...
I'm sorry, I forgot to get that on the agenda, actually. In fact, we got one other item we need here, uh, from the Historical Society.
We, we received a plaque for the Jones Building for one of the preservation projects of the year. We'll get this installed, so I'll figure out where to put all these great awards.
Lot of good things going on here. Lot of good things. Any other awards that I hadn't mentioned here? Okay. Alright, uh, you do have your draft council meeting minutes from March 21st, 2019. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, Ms. Grant made the motion. Uh, Mr. Yon seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's no. All members voting for the motion. You have in your agenda package as well, the financial statements for February. Uh, these are, do not require action with the council, but we have our CFO here to answer any questions that may be. Any questions or comments? We're still doing good, right? Financially, right? Okay. Okay, moving along. Uh, there's no one from, here from the 10-minute public input, so we'll move on to whole business discussion and possible action of the 2018 fiscal year-end budget amendment. My understanding, we do need to take some action on that tonight, so. Any questions or discussions, uh, or comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Okay, Ms. Grant made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. That was quick, wasn't it? Alright, this one might not be as quick. Discussion of the proposed property and casualty insurance renewal. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor and council. Our property and casualty insurance policy renews May 1st, uh, so we will be asking in two weeks council approval for this renewal. Uh, Mr. Buddy Hodges, our broker for the city, he's posted a little summary page. I hope that y'all have had an opportunity to read that. The main point of that summary is that the rates increased only 1.7% for this year. So it was a good renewal. Um, the overall premium increased approximately 5%, but that was due to adding some pieces of property, for example, like the building we're in now. So overall, it's a very, a very renewable renewal.
Was there, were there some real estate that came off of that? I mean, did, for instance, the Board of Education building and, uh, the grammar school, did that come off?
That came off in prior years.
Did it? Okay.
I believe it came off in 17, and the fire consolidation properties came off right about the same time.
I, I will verify that.
Yeah, I'm behind a little bit. Yeah, okay. Alright. Any questions about that? Ms. Grant?
This is asked on the 2 million increase in the blanket property limit. Is that due to real estate or just overall? Could you explain that?
Yes.
I assumed it was real estate, but I didn't know.
Yes, and it was, it was predominantly this building.
For this building? Okay.
Sir.
That's, that was my assumption. And seven additional vehicles, I see?
Yes, sir.
Over where we were, I guess, last year?
Yes, sir. A few different, a few additional vehicles, and then on the inland marine, there was additional equipment. Uh, I think we had some, uh, elite, uh, back truck, things, things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright. Discussion of the proposed hotel motel tax fund budget amendment. Mr. Ingram?
Mayor, council, this is, uh, more or less a formality based on council's prior actions. If you recall, we approved, uh, to allocate some funds to Canton Tourism for this year's summer concert series, and as well as we agreed to allocate some funds toward the signage project that we have going on, so the, the major signs and some of the wayfinding signages. So there's basically two amendments that, uh, this will take care of, and that is $60,000 contribution to Canton Tourism. It's gonna fund those, that, uh, summer concert series, and then the $150,000, which is the estimated cost for the signage.
Mr. Goodman?
Mr. Ingram, what, what do you project for the total income to be from those taxes?
For, for the hotel motel tax overall?
Right.
$635,000.
Okay. So about a third of it is going to those two projects?
Uh, yes, but clarify, we're actually using prior year's funds.
Okay.
We're using reserves.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grant?
And the $150,000 or $160,000 for the, the new signage, does that cost cover the signs we'll get installed in this budget period? That was my understanding?
Yes, sir.
And then the remainder will be in next year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I had another question. Um, on rental car, uh, taxes, don't we have a new rental car, uh, agency in the city? I saw a new name, I'm for sure.
And possibly if it's up and running?
Or location, I guess.
Or if it's, is it up and running yet?
Yeah.
Um, I'm unaware of one, if we do.
Okay. Budget APIS there by Brewster, is that what you mean?
Yeah, and then we've got the one over, the one over by Race Track and...
Well, that's enterprise, you're talking about.
Enterprise there. But is, is enterprise not over here as well?
Is the enterprise second?
Yeah, they got a second location, but they've been there for a...
But it's been there for a while, the enterprise.
Yeah, we've, we've got two enterprises, we've got the budget.
But also, we have the dealerships too, don't we? Don't they do that as well?
Hertz? Yeah, um, I don't believe any of the dealerships rent vehicles. I think they will loan vehicles. And, and Hertz, I think operates out of...
Out of the...
Yeah, out of... But the, the dealerships themselves do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Sounds good. Okay, uh, item C, discussion of Task Order 13 from Atkins for design, bidding, and construction management services for the Etowah Trail Extension and the Old Ball Ground Sewer. Mr. Otavia?
Um, this was, I think, Mr. Pepper's brought this up last, uh, um, meeting about Atkins doing this project that would do, combine both the trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park along with the second phase of the Old Ball Ground Sewer. It would be done as one project, um, and, you know, we can take advantage of some, some commonalities with construction, with design, with surveying, with permitting, and, and things like that, so.
Okay, so that, you're talking about going from, uh, Old Ball Ground Highway, Old Ball Ground Road to, uh, to, to Bowling Park on the same side of the river?
Yes.
All on the same side of the river to Bowling Park?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see it up there, but yeah, most of it's originally slated to run on the, I guess, what's that? The north side of the river?
Okay.
If you, if you think about it, we ended the last phase of the Old Ball Ground Sewer improvement behind the Canton Mill Lofts near our Alum Pond.
Right behind Popeyes.
And so this project takes the sewer expansion from that location along Heritage Park on the side of the park closest to Ingalls and YMCA, underneath the bridge at Waleska Street, behind the Riverview Apartments, behind Old City Hall, Omearia Highway, behind Comcast, behind Brewsters, behind George Power, behind the bowling alley, and eventually comes up to the lift station.
Yeah. It essentially follows the existing line that needs to be upsized.
Yeah. Now, we had, uh, seemed like some years ago, I don't know how long it's been, but, uh, didn't we sort of have a layout of that at that time with some tax plaits kinda showing where that, uh, alignment was gonna be?
Yeah, it was done probably, I don't know, 2015, 2016, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, three years, three, maybe three, three, four years ago, yeah, okay.
The, uh, it's a little bit difficult to see, but the map, which is also in your agenda package, highlights, um, the easement areas that will have to be looked at as it relates to the trail and the sewer project. So there are, I believe I counted, seven parcels of land that are between what the city controls at Waleska Street, uh, that are privately controlled until we get back to Army Corps of Engineers and Bowling Park.
Ms. Grant?
On, on those tracks, and I saw in here 15 easements maybe needed. And we're proposing following that trail on the same path as the sewer replacements, which, which makes sense. I think we've talked about that Columbus model. Um, my question is, do we, do we not have easements existing for that sewer? And our sewer easements and trail easements, would those be different or the same? But I guess it's like, wondering if we're, we're, we're replacing the sewer, but we have to get easements.
They may need to be expanded. I think we have like a 20-foot easement now for the existing sewer. It may have to be expanded. It would depend on where the final, you know, routing goes, but, um...
And ultimately, what we're trying to do is push the trail portion of that easement as close to the river as possible. And so we may have an existing easement for sewer that doesn't get us closer to the river, and so we'll have to expand that in those areas.
I'm not, I'm not sure you could use a water and sewer easement for other purposes though, could you?
No, you'd have to, you'd have to get that in right here.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if I remember right, the sewer line is kind of where, almost to where the bank starts going up, and the trail's gonna wanna be...
Further out.
Further out.
From our purposes, though, by having that expanded easement, if we are able to put in a multipurpose trail from the water and sewer standpoint, when we have a sewer issue in that area, it gives us better access to get to it, uh, from a flatter part of the property as opposed to having to come down through the private property to get to it.
But we have, we have easements on the sewer if we take the trail away. We, we have, those are in place.
We have easements, and we may have to expand those or, or get new ones, depending on how the final routing...
For the trailer for the sewer?
The sewer.
Okay.
And the trail.
And then just as long as we're talking to the property owner, we would ask for the trail easement as well.
I don't think you have trouble getting it on, on particularly the same easement, but...
Well, and the, the trail easement...
Some of you would. I, I know one, you probably will.
Well, the trail easement is closer to the river anyways, and so it's gonna be in a non-buildable zone from a property owner's standpoint already.
Inaccessible for those property owners until you get down toward the bowling alley. I mean, if you think about it, it's the back of the hill for everybody.
I guess my question here, and I don't wanna belabor the point, but my question here is, we had talked at one time about going, you know, across the bridge and, and basically down the river, past the mill and so forth, uh, which we know we don't have some of those easements there, for sure. Now, is that a sewer line there that has to be replaced? Behind the old mill that's being developed now?
That's, um, that, that, that's staying, if it's, on the, the mill side?
Yeah, the old, yeah, the old mill side.
That's being developed now. No, that, that, that sewer is actually being, uh, well, portions of it are being rehabbed as part of the INI program.
Being rehabbed what?
There, as part of the INI...
Oh, okay.
Program. Some of those, um, have been replaced already.
But it's not an expansion project. It's basically a project where we're either slip lining existing pipe or replacing a section of existing pipe.
Okay.
So the construction is not nearly as, as, as large scale as we'll have on the other side of the river.
And I think they've pretty much finished most of that work. We, we had them do that first because of the mill. We just, we didn't wanna run into that.
The, the line on the other side of the river is, it's, it's gonna be laid like parallel to what's there beside it?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And is that a, like a 20-foot easement?
Right now, it's a 20. We have 20-foot easements. It may have to go to a 30. Um, being on the, I, I didn't, haven't looked at the, the proposed alignment yet, but that will probably work out during design, but, uh...
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Nick?
General question. So how long does this take? So the, this engagement would take certain amount of time, and then...
Well, their schedule, they said they should have everything done by August of 2021. All design, construction, everything.
Construction included, not just, okay.
Yeah, the, um, assuming that they, they begin, um, in May, they'll do their survey in a couple of months, design in, I don't know, four or five months, get their permitting done. Um, construction beginning in April of 2020. But it's, you know, it's over a mile trail and, and close to that or more in, uh, on the sewer line too, so.
And I would just mention that the one reason why we bring this to you as a task order is that Atkins did the design on the other section of Old Ball Ground that we completed a few years back. So they're familiar with this particular section of pipe and, and, and issues with it. And they also did the trail section in that area between Heritage and Etowah, so they're familiar with the trail system. If they're working on one, it just makes sense, at least from a staff standpoint, that we let them work on both at the same time, since they're gonna overlap in location.
And I have a question for, for Billy. Do we have or can we pull together a, I know that not everything's etched in stone yet on what the trail system would look like, but, you know, if there was a vision or something, you know, that, and I'm even thinking, we've talked about it, branching into communities and whatnot, you know, it almost feels like they're, you know, I don't think people are always, you know, so specific on, well, when, you know, this date and that date, but if you, if we can paint a picture and a vision for what we see coming, and it'll always change and be just as old as when we just made it, it'd be great to, you know, and there'd be a lot of dashed lines going everywhere because they wouldn't, they'd be proposed and whatnot, but help to really give a vision of what we're trying to do.
We have something like that, don't we? That we, cost estimate and everything.
We had an initial concept done by Atkins in 2016?
15.
15? And, and it has a lot of those areas in it. This is very close, very similar to what they had proposed, at least on that side of the river. So I think what we can do is we can take their sketch of this project, at least the parameters of it, not knowing specific details, but, but this, and tie it in with the... parameters of it, not knowing specific details, but, but this, and tie it in with the designs that are being completed now from Etowah River Park to the Tressle, and that, that should give us a full layout of at least what we've got, the funds at this point, to work on going westward and eastward. And it does connect all of the city's parks along the river, except for Harmon. That would be the only one that's not in that list.
Other side.
Not on this side, so we've still gotta get there through some properties, but, but that should give the public a good idea of what it is we're working towards.
Yeah, no, it'd just be great to have just that simple one-pager that, you know, you just keep throwing out there and keeping people so excited about it, because I think, you know, whether it be businesses or new folks coming in, it's just, that's our differentiator that no other city has, is a river running through it, and so, you know, we, we know we've got a lot of great ideas and activity going towards it, you know?
Well, like, this one, for instance, I think, you know, when we decide to move forward on it, we can get a sign made at the end of Heritage Park that shows this section continuing forward.
Yeah.
And as we complete the designs on the other end, I think we put one in Etowah River Park with a sign that shows that section moving forward.
Yeah.
And that'll help with some of that also.
And just to add a little bit, you know, as part of the 140 traffic study, they talked about doing those eight-foot sidewalks and, and making almost a trail system north up 140, the ultimate plan as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that? Before we go to the next one, I would like to introduce a couple of people that are here. Charlisse Byrd, a former state representative, is here tonight, and her husband, Mike Byrd, former chairman of the Board of Commissioners and current chairperson of the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. Glad to have you here. Maybe you learned something here, right? Probably not, too much. Okay, the next item is a discussion on the revised joint project agreement between the City of Canton and the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for the Hickory Log Creek Reservoir Project. I, I did ask, and, and we were provided this evening, basically, a brief executive summary of, of, of the changes, which I'm not sure I still know what all they are, but.
Essentially, this, this has been, you know, a long time coming, but what, what kind of generated it was, was going from the way the, the water is allocated and accounted for.
Right.
Where it was originally done basically as a discharge or water release allocation, and what we're proposing is more of a storage allocation. So that's, that's the biggest thing, and then, you know, if you look back, this thing was developed, what, in, started in 1999, ultimately accepted in 2000, and it was primarily written for the design and construction of the whole project, the dam, the pump station, the pipeline, everything. All those projects have been completed since '08 for the most part, and we're now into operation, been officially in operation since 2012, the end of 2012. And there were a lot of things in there that were cleaned up, you know, addresses, people, firms, procedures, that were kind of dealing mainly with construction as opposed to operation. So those were a lot of the cleanup items, but essentially, the, the items, the biggest item was the way we were accounting for, uh, storage of the water, um, and the ability for either partner to provide employees for the project.
Okay. You're convinced that this is in our best interest and actually perhaps an advantage to us, not necessarily advantage, but at least a benefit to the city?
I think it's better be, because of the fact, for example, the way it was written before, we could release thirty, let's just look at the authority, they could release 33 million gallons a day, no questions asked, and they could, they could drain the whole reservoir if they wanted to. Whereas now, they have a certain allocation, we have a certain allocation in the reservoir. They can only release their portion of the water and not touch ours, so from that standpoint, I think it's better for us. I can go back to the time when we were releasing, when we had, uh, low river levels, and we could only release 11 million gallons a day because that was all we could release, that was our portion, and we had to release it over a, a short amount of time to, to get that water level to be, to raise in the river. With this storage allocation, we could release as long as we want, as much as we want, as long as we still had our, our storage volume, so from that standpoint, it would, it would benefit us.
Okay. Regarding the first right of refusal, how, how does, is that in regard to the potential of a water plant or something there? Is that what that is?
The, yeah, well, yeah, that was, um, the way it was written, it was cleaned up a little bit where now it's written, I don't think it's a first right of refusal, it's either entity can, can do something as long as they inform the other, but I think the biggest issue is that it would have, for example, if we wanted to put a water plant up there, we would actually have to build a new intake out of the reservoir. We couldn't use the, any of the infrastructure in place for the dam. We didn't wanna compromise that, that project.
But it would just be notifying the other party and not?
Yeah. I mean, if, if they.
In other words, they can't, couldn't object to it?
Correct.
I mean, they could, but we're doing it good.
And, you know, if they wanted to build a plant and, and build a pipeline all the way to Cobb, well, then they could, but I don't think they're gonna do that.
Okay, okay. Mitch Grant?
I know the other one, uh, the former agreement, and, and this one says, uh, the dam will be kept at full pool, or this one says highest elevation practicable. I know we discussed, and I asked in the last discussion, as far as keeping it full, is it mandatory? Are we gonna have any increased cost? I know that hadn't been an issue with all the rain we've had this past year, but if we got an instance where we were having to, to pump and fill it back up, I assume that would be the way we'd fill it up. Is it gonna cost, I mean, is it gonna cost us more money, or is that just as like, it says practicable, it's not mandatory, I think, which was last time?
It, it would depend, depend a lot on what the, the reason for lowering. For example, when we had to do maintenance on the, on the, the gate, we had to drop the, the level, so any, any cost would be split, you know, as it is now, 75, 25. If, for example, let's just say, we wanted to release water for whatever reason, but the water authority didn't, so then we would be responsible for the power to, to refill, same way they would do the same thing.
But at the same time, there's, there's some flexibility in this that, you know, if we had to release for whatever reason, for the, for the, for the use of the water, and we knew that, you know, over the period of the next few weeks, there was rain coming in, we wouldn't necessarily pump just to get the full pool, knowing that there's a forecast of rain that's gonna fill it up anyways. I think, what was the number, we added 130 million gallons of water in two days?
It was some, some outrageous amount, just before, we, we had the, you know, lowered the, the lev, the level for maintenance just before we got all those rains, and I think it filled, I forget how quickly, but.
It was within a couple of weeks it had filled back up.
Yeah, it, it almost backed up.
Well, that was my second question, and if we are in that instance where we do have to pumping it, is there a period of time we have to do that, or is it, is that part of the agreement, like within two weeks or three weeks or four weeks?
The, the intent of that, that whole statement was to try to maintain recreation on, on the lake, not so much of just keep dropping it and dropping it, just.
But there's no, so it has to be full pool by?
No, it doesn't have to be done, no.
No. And so from that standpoint, if, if the City of Canton lowered it for our use, it would be our cost to fill it back up.
Mm-hmm.
And so we would work with staff to anticipate, you know, how we would need to fill it up, are we gonna pump, do we think it's gonna rain, you know, what have you. It does give us a little bit more control that perhaps the authority doesn't go in and drain it dry and, or at least their portion of it, and just sit on it, you know. It does throw some of that back to the Board of Managers to have those discussions at their regular meetings, okay, what's the plan, you know? We released water last month, and we didn't get the rain that we wanted, we need to, we need to pump back in, and it sure costs to do that.
Right, but the authority can release a lot more water if they drain it. There's no caveat or like time limit that they have to fill it back up. Are we a disadvantage there, or?
Well, they can.
I understand the concept of recreation, I just want.
They can, the difficulty for them is they still only get a certain percentage out of Allatoona, and so if Allatoona is at a full level, they're just gonna be passing their water along to South Georgia and not really get the benefit of it. So I don't necessarily see that as an issue, we haven't had it as an issue, we just wanted that language in there so that it was understood, while this is a water supply reservoir, it still provides recreational amenities, and because of that, our goal should always be, one, because it's water storage, and two, because it's recreation, to keep it as full as possible, just state the obvious, we wanna keep it as full as possible.
And I, I don't think it would ever be an issue of us being unable to fill it. You could turn it into a fight about who's gonna pay for it.
Yeah, right.
And we can turn the pump on, and the pump runs, and it, and it fills back up, and they say, well, we weren't gonna do that, and we would say, well, you're supposed to. So I think the, you, when, when, when legally we put practicable, that's because you can't, you can't, if you said two weeks, then they, what happens if it was gonna rain, and, you know, you can't think of all the what-ifs. So you say, just as soon as you can.
So that's, that's.
Is basically what we're saying, but, but I think the failsafe is, we flip the switch and run the pumps if we want to fill it back up.
Mm-hmm. So that's, but then we have to argue about who pays for that.
But better than arguing about filling it back up.
Practicable, like the.
Right.
Attorney Landis.
What does that mean?
Taking a break there, so.
Well, and so ultimately, the way everything works, if there's a disagreement, it goes to arbitration anyways.
Okay.
And so a judge is gonna decide who should pay damage.
And we would rather be fighting about who's gonna pay for it than.
Not have it.
Whether to fill it up.
And what's the term of this agreement, or is it in definite, or is it?
No, so.
Annual, or?
No, so when we initially did the joint project agreement, it was a 50-year agreement. Uh, when we do this amendment to the agreement, we're keeping the 2002 date that it started, I believe it was April.
Two thousand, yeah, two thousand.
And so this agreement will go 50 years to 2052. We didn't extend it from today another 50 years. So there is a, we just kept the same deadline that we had before.
So it's 33 years left on that agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, roughly.
Roughly, okay. Anyone else?
I've got one question.
Mr. Gooden?
We talked about the use of the lake, the reservoir for more recreation. Have we ever made any headway on that, other than the, you know, electric motor and fishing?
So recreation is actually dealt with under the reservoir, which is a city document, not a document of the Board of Managers. It requires EPD approval, and last year, I believe it was last fall, EPD was going through the process of deciding if they were gonna make recreational rule changes to water storage reservoirs. They haven't announced any decisions on that yet, so part of what our thought was, let them decide what it is, the state's gonna relax, and then we can follow that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think what they, they're proposing is to allow the local owners to, to have a little more leeway in what they wanna do with their, their facilities. So if we wanted to do another dock or another ramp or something like, but we'll have to wait and see what, what comes out of that.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item E, discussion of the proposed amendment to Canton Development Code, Chapter 105, 1402 and 105, 1403, Appeal of Decision of Canton Board of Zoning Appeals and Canton Board of Construction Adjustments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, within the packet you received, besides the cover memo about this, received copies of two ordinance amendments. The first one had a date of June 2017. That ordinance amendment is when City Council decided and agreed to add into the whole process with Board of Zoning Appeals and Board of Construction Appeals, uh, the process that someone agreed of those boards' decisions, could petition City Council, and Council could decide if they wanted to hear appeal. Uh, that was passed in June of 2017. The second ordinance that is in your packet was a, an ordinance that was adopted in September 2018. This ordinance completed the long list of ordinance amendments that council and staff had been working on since 2016. There were some original language that addressed these same two sections, uh, from all the way back in 2016. It was my failure to observe correctly before City Council adopted all of these ordinance amendments in 2018. We basically undid and did away with City Council approval that was approved in 2017. I'm bringing this back before you to correct that error, uh, to add that City Council process back into these two sections. We would have a public hearing prior, at the beginning of the meeting, in two weeks, and you will have a new packet with the new ordinance that reflects adding that language in. It's basically gonna be the same ordinance language from the one dated June of 2017, but it'll have 2019 dates.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, so that's coming back for a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Item F, discussion of River Mill LCI Enterprise Zone Application for Incentives for Canton Mill Ventures LLC, 141 Railroad Street.
Yes, sir. So you have in your package, um, an application that we received from Canton Mill Ventures for enterprise zone incentives. Just as an FYI, this is the only parcel of land in the city that's eligible for an enterprise zone. It was done originally back in 2002, I believe, and then it was, uh, updated again in 2009, or, I'm sorry, 2013, 2003, 2013. I have spoken with the applicant. We're gonna hold on this, it's not something that's gotta be done immediately because it wouldn't take effect until the next tax year anyways, um, and have spoken with them because they may have a better incentive to go through the County Development Authority, and so we're gonna look at that with them. But I did want you to, did want you to know, we did get an application for the incentive. There's information in here about the incentive and how that works, but it may not be the route that we end up going, and so, uh, the applicant wants to kinda hold off on this and see what their best avenue is.
Okay. Mitch Grant?
And I believe the application in, in the pack is the one they applied for, it's to 2018, right? So this is the originally applied for, but, um, I was just wondering on, on Mr. Hodges' memo of April 23rd, 2018, one of the criteria they mentioned is making them eligible for the, um, enterprise zone, the last bullet planned housing for current and future residents of the City of Canton, as well as first-time buyers and, uh, public employees. My understanding that the housing phase is not in the first phase, my question is, I don't know, I think I know the answer to this, but that, that doesn't, that's not a requirement? They don't need that to meet that, or do they, or does he need to, if he comes back, he needs to correct that, or?
They don't, ultimately, all they need to do is provide investment, I believe it's over $10,000.
$10,000.
And they have to create at least five jobs.
Well, there's a, there's a list of criteria that you, as the City Council, judge whether they have met enough of them, but there's no, it's not that you meet three or five or one, it's, you just judge whether it's worth it.
Right. So if they, if you do this at a later date, I mean, they can bring all this up to date?
Well, they have a, they, they have one complication in that all of that is on one piece of property, it's one tax parcel, so if they were to get some incentives, it would be a little bit, it'd be a little more difficult for them to do it by then doing the housing component separate. You've already given them an incentive for that tax parcel that runs for 10 years, so it would be, I don't know how they would add on something later, so that's a choice they're making by not doing that now.
And just so you're aware, um, it's not the only incentive that they're working on down there, there's a couple of the businesses that are down there that are working on the downtown development revolving loan fund for their particular entity.
downtown development revolving loan fund for their particular entities that they're eligible for. Um, I believe in discussion with Misty Martin, that Reformation Brewery is eligible for some of their expenses under the existing industry program of constitutional development authority, because they've been in the county for at least three years. So, and, and then, it's also an opportunity zone, and so the businesses in the opportunity zone are eligible for those as well. I think there's just so many things that are going on, there needs to be a sit-down discussion between county development authority, city of Canton, and the property to make sure it is that they get one, it's not hurting them on another, that they understand, here's what they're eligible for, and here's how they can either overlap or cannot overlap.
You know, and on like the tax abatement, I mean, the enterprise zone, those advantages go to Penn Hodges Properties, or does, do those apply to every business in that zone, or is it just the holding company?
Anybody that, anybody that creates at least five jobs is entitled to it. A tenant's not gonna have any taxes to abate, so it ends up being the property owner who gets the best benefit. The opportunity zone is where the tenants benefit, because they get a tax credit for every job they add. So, they're, the tenants will go for that. What the landlord would do is pass through, because, you know, they pay common area maintenance charges, which includes taxes, and so the tax, the tenants get the benefit of not having to pay those, as, as a pass-through kind of thing.
And so, in an enterprise zone, the incentive is that the city can abate city, county, and state taxes. Well, there's not any state taxes anymore, so the city or county taxes, under a, a development authority incentive, it would be city, county, and school district taxes, but both of those, uh, abatements follow different schedules, so you have to figure out what the taxable value might look like and apply it to that schedule to see where the savings or the, the incentive is for the owner. Because it can differ, it, it will differ.
On the other things, like plan review fees, business license inspection fees, those, again, do those apply to all businesses in, in there, or?
My recommendation to you would be that you not look at anything aside from the tax abatement. And the reason is, I don't necessarily see that we're having to incentivize businesses for signing leases with them, they're already doing that.
That's, that confirms my-
And I, I don't really think that we would want to, um, do anything with permit fees and all of that as it relates to the mill, because they're already in the process of doing them anyways, they've already paid those fees. To, to me, the big savings for them would be the tax abatement piece, and it's just a question of which is the better incentive for them on that piece.
Tax abatement's a pretty good incentive, so, I, I, I agree, so I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Anyone else? Now, things have really changed. Few years ago, we needed to incentivize people, and now, it's really not that necessary, quite honestly.
Well, and I would, and I would mention to you that, you know, once this project is going, I would suggest that if you do decide to use an enterprise zone here, you go ahead, do it, and then sunset that enterprise zone, there's no sense later on down the road to have it down there. If they go the other route, then I would suggest to council that you repeal the enterprise zone, because they've already done it, and they've gotten incentive another route, we don't need it anymore.
For that property because-
For that property, because it-
That zone, right now, just currently exists for that.
It's just for that parcel.
That parcel.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Peppers? You got anything else to say?
Uh, not on that one, on this one, on, uh, 10G.
Okay.
Um, so, you'll recall, we've discussed this a few times, about, um, North Georgia Angel House. Just as background, we have the closest sewer connection for it, it's currently in the Waleska Water and Sewer area. Um, so what we are doing is we're following a process that we would follow even with a county, uh, water and sewer authority, but doing it with Waleska, where we are requesting that they relinquish this parcel from their water and sewer, um, service area to the city, so that we can provide water and sewer to it. As such, uh, the only way to get water to the site is basically for us to buy wholesale from Waleska to serve the site, but it allows us to provide a bill of water and sewer, and to be able to meter the sewer usage based on the water. And so, we've, uh, the mayor and I have had a sit-down meeting with the city of Waleska, uh, we ended up meeting with North Georgia Angel House, we had, uh, uh, Mr. Cooper here from the county, and this was the cleanest way to deal with that outstanding issue, which is for you to approve this letter, for us to send it on to Waleska, for them to approve. That clears up our service delivery issues, and then North Georgia Angel House would become a customer of the city of Canton for water and sewer.
Is this, is this something we need to, would, would vote on next meeting, or?
Yeah, next meeting, I think we were going to, yeah.
It would be at the next meeting, and that, that falls in line with Waleska's meetings, so, yeah.
So there's no need to-
They're aware of that.
Do it tonight, or, I mean, is no, it's two weeks, I mean, is it gonna make a difference to?
I don't know.
They're expect, they're expecting it to be two weeks, because that was discussed with the-
The letter we provided for them had it dated as after the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Grubbs?
Are they, do they have lines already?
So, um, as part of their connection to the city, they were required to get an easement through common area at the back of, um, the preserve, preserve at Canyon Ridge, and then they have to also get an easement through a private property owner to connect to our sewer, which is on the right-of-way of one of the streets in that neighborhood. They've gotten all of their easements, they've started construction on the project, the issue is now, you know, who's gonna actually serve them sewer from a billing standpoint, and that's what this clears up.
Have they been unseptic up until this point?
They have.
Okay, so, will this, uh, cause any burden to Canton?
It shouldn't, tell me, ma'am.
We'll be buying water from Waleska wholesale.
After they've bought it from us wholesale.
After they've bought it from us, yeah, that's kind of weird. Would you assume, and that's something we didn't discuss, would you assume that we, the, the exchange would just be in credits? Do we know what Waleska's rate is?
We, I mean, we already buy some back from them on wholesale, as it relates to a few of the lots up in the northern part of Great Sky. So, we, we already have an invoicing system with them, so-
But it wouldn't just really be sending them a check, it'd be more or less credits back and forth, right?
I think we do invoice, to keep the, to keep the billing correct, keep the accountability, we invoice them, they invoice us. What we would do, though, is we would read, we would get the meter reading at that particular location, that would allow us to apply that towards a sewer bill. And water.
Anyone else? Any other questions on that? Okay. Anything else you have?
Just a few items. Um, first of all, I did want to, to, um, make note, and I think Ms. Hardy already did this, we had a very successful art and wine walk, I know many of you participated, it was a great event, I got my community tie there, great tie salesperson there.
And it looks mighty good on you, too.
Thank you very much. Um, but it was a great event, and I know that the Main Street Board's gonna be looking at it and seeing if they can approve that for, um, for future. Um, we did receive back, uh, requests for proposals from three firms related to the parking deck on Archer Street. Uh, we'll be working through a process of getting those reviewed in the next month, and then hopefully bringing rec, council for approval in May, so that we can start on that project on the design, uh, this summer, early this summer. Um, I do have a copy of a zoning case summary that was provided to the city, we'll be getting email copies of this out to the mayor and council, it is a county zoning case, um, off of Lakeside Drive, this is the, um, uh, this was a trailer park area that's just south of, uh, Pilgrim's Pride, north of Exit 14 there, to the east of the interstate, so it's between the city of Canton and the city of Holly Springs in that unincorporated area. Um, the applicant is hoping to rezone it from general commercial and R20 to RM16 multifamily to include townhomes and apartments. I'll send you a copy of that particular request, so that if you have any comments, we can provide comments back to the county. Uh, the last thing I have, uh, tonight, I think I left my copy up there, um, based on conversations with the mayor and council, uh, over the last couple of months, um, you have before you a copy of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Canton and the Canton Downtown Development Authority. This allows the city to sell the asset that we have, the police department, um, off of East Marietta, uh, through the downtown development authority to a nonprofit entity for the creation of a museum. It will be up to the downtown development authority to find the nonprofit that would purchase the property, uh, the goal of which would be to sell at our appraised value of 1.3 million dollars for that site. Um, what I would like to do, if council would consider, is to add that to the agenda tonight, so that we can approve our portion of the intergovernmental agreement, get it in the hands of the downtown development authority, and let them start their work on trying to find a buyer for that site. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So you, you want to essentially have this as the, uh, initial discussion and the vote in two weeks? Is that what you're saying, or what?
Well, what I would suggest is that if you're okay with the intergovernmental agreement, you go ahead and approve it from your end. The downtown development authority will have to approve it from their end, and they'll have to bring back to you any agreement that they own the property. So you're gonna have the ultimate approval at some point in the future anyways, this just gets the ball rolling on our end to let them know we're serious about selling the property, and go out and find somebody to do something with it.
So you're looking for a motion tonight?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and do.
Do have a second. Okay, uh, Mr. Goodman made the motion, Mr. Dion seconded that motion, any other discussion or question?
Motion to approve the IGA, or is it a motion to add to the agenda?
We do need to add it to the agenda first.
To the agenda first.
Okay, that was a motion, okay. You made the motion, right?
A motion to add to the agenda.
Mr. Dion, you seconded it? Okay. All in favor, sign the five, saying aye?
Aye.
It's on the agenda, okay, now a motion.
Now, the next motion is to-
Approve the-
Approve it.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah, the intergover, intergovernmental agreement, and then bring it forward the next meeting, right? For approval?
If, no?
If the DDA could get it, a deal done before the next meeting, we could bring it back, but it would be on their timetable at that point.
Okay, so second that.
You made, you made a motion.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Goodman made a motion, Mr. Dion seconded the motion, any other discussion on that, questions? If not, those in favor, signature five, saying aye?
Aye.
Close, no? All members voting for the motion? Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. And the only other thing we have is an, uh, executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
I believe, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to take this opportunity, since the chief is here, to give them a praise. I unfortunately had the opportunity to need their services this last Friday, when I was involved in an accident, and the officers involved, they came to the scene, the officer that took the report could not have been more professional, uh, Officer Solis, I believe. Oh, and, uh, then there was a young man, I did not get his name, uh, who was off-duty officer, who stopped and stayed until he was certain that, uh, Officer Solis had the situation in hand, and he absolutely did not have to do that, and that just says a lot about the caliber of the people. I just wanted to thank you for all your help Friday afternoon. I was involved in, and I thank you very much.
That wasn't because you had a council member name badge on, was it?
I never said a word.
We got a great police department, great folks there. Absolutely, thank you. All right, uh, we need a-
Motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss real estate and litigation.
Litigation. Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Dixon seconded the motion, all in favor, signature five, saying aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Uh, we will not be coming back out to make any final decisions.